Planning Commission meeting to order, roll call, please.
All right, Commissioner Manellas. Mark, are you there?
Yeah, it wouldn't unmute, there we go.
Commissioner Walters. John.
John, where did John go? Oh, there he is.
John's here, but he's muted.
Give me a thumbs up.
There we go, I unmuted.
All right. Commissioner Paulson. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
And then I have absent for the time being Commissioner Bellows and Commissioner Casanova. Okay.
All right, so moving on here, first starter of business is approval of the minutes of January 27th. I hope all of the commissioners have had a chance to take a look at those minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of January 27th? Okay, I see no hands raised, so I now need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve them.
I'll second.
That was Annie on motion and Billy on second. Okay, and in discussion.
Joe has just joined on.
I got it.
All right, so let's go ahead and go to a vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes? Do we want a roll call on that?
If you just raise your hand, I'll count.
Okay.
We got Commissioner Manellas, Petrie, Walter, Reynolds, Paulson. Joe, I can't see you with your camera.
Of course, he wasn't here for the meeting, so he really wouldn't want to. Probably is not going to want to vote on that, so.
All right, so I've got five, zero, one.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I mean now.
Okay, great.
Abstaining for that last one, Joe.
Got it.
So, the vote was five, five, four, or five yays, zero nays, one abstinent.
Okay, motion is approved. Next order of business is the updates on the master plan.
Good morning, Chair Petrie and Commissioners, thanks for putting some time for the King City Master Plan project on your agenda for today. And as I mentioned briefly before we got started, it sounds like we have about a half an hour for this portion of your meeting, so I will try to move quickly through my slides, and if I go too fast, please just say it's slowed down or feel free to chime in and ask a question. So. Can you all see that's the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, a little bit on process. This King City Master Plan project is building off the 2018 concept plan and the baseline conditions, community vision, and preliminary design considerations in that 2018 concept plan. We also are paying close attention and will be incorporating findings and recommendations from the King City TSP process, and we're also coordinating with the folks in Tigard who are in the midst of their Tigard River Terrace Concept Plan process. We've had several meetings with them already, and some representatives from Tigard are on our technical advisory committee. The master plan is going to take the, you know, the ideas from the concept plan and provide the details and comprehensive plan and development code amendments needed to implement the vision that was laid out in the concept. We are on about, I think, a 16-month schedule. We're aiming to wrap up by the end of this year, 2021. Right now, we are in this area, late February, early March. We, the blue square indicates meetings of our advisory committees. We have a technical and a stakeholder advisory committee which met in January and February. This purple diamond represents briefings with you all and city council, and we're wrapping that up right now. And the gold star represents our first community outreach efforts, which I will talk about in just a little bit. One of the first things we did was put together a public involvement plan. I mentioned our stakeholder advisory committee, I'll just pause on the screen for a moment. This group, I believe, met on February 8th. And we have nice representation from all over King City and the expansion area. So, we're really happy about the diverse group. We have several folks who are in this meeting today are part of either this group or our technical advisory committee, which I'll click on next. And we appreciate you all volunteering your time for this project as well. So, representatives for King City, the state of Oregon, Metro, Tigard, Washington County, and some other key stakeholders on the technical advisory committee, and that group met in late January, I believe. So, Mike, could you look at the question in the chat? I'm not as familiar with the neighborhood names.
Yeah, I'll answer those.
Okay. Great, so moving along, we have a variety of engagement activities and tools that we'll be using throughout the course of this project. In addition to the stakeholder and technical advisory committees, we will be conducting stakeholder interviews and focus groups over the next few weeks with, you know, so many, there were plenty of volunteers to be on those committees and other and other stakeholders will be talking to over the next few weeks. These briefings with you all, public workshops, community surveys, social media, our project website, which is kingcitymasterplan.com. I hope if you haven't visited that site yet, you do so soon. And I'll talk a little bit more about upcoming community engagement activities toward the end of the presentation in just a minute. So, what we've really focused on thus far in the process is existing in planned conditions. And I'm going to walk through these pretty quickly because hopefully it's a reminder for most people and not a lot of new information. But here, our vision is a vibrant, walkable and complete community where everyday needs are easily accessible, housing choice and affordability for current and future residents, safe, efficient, convenient, and reliable transportation choices to enhance connectivity and minimize automobile dependency, protection of environmentally sensitive lands and retention of healthy ecosystems, efficient and equitable provision of infrastructure and associated costs. And here are four frameworks were established in the 2018 concept plan, and we are using those as a vision to guide our work. So here, you've got the vision for natural systems, protecting the Tuauta River, reducing runoff and healing erosion, integrating green spaces and wetlands into developed areas. We will be looking closely at streams and wetlands and floodplains and making sure that our plans show development that's sensitive to those areas for implementation. Land use, providing a mix of housing to accommodate a wide range of household types, incomes, and needs, creating a new mixed-use area, the town center area or main street area with neighborhood scale and character, and allowing for gentle transitions between rural and urban development. And hopefully, you're all familiar with this map that shows kind of the four neighborhoods that will be created with the more rural character to the east and the town center area to the west. Mobility, providing a complete networks, network of streets and paths, connecting the transportation network, supporting all modes of transportation, and creating a walkable urban environment that complements transit. And you may have seen this map before, but through the TSP and through our own work, we're looking at those east-west and north-south connections that are the primary connections that are going to connect this part of the community to Tigard and King City and other areas in the region. And then public utilities and services, integrated stormwater management, reducing runoff again, and using best practices for stormwater management and mitigation. So, just a few notes on opportunities and challenges that we've identified thus far in the process. So here are some of our here are some of the elements that as we create our land use concepts that are going to remain fixed in all of the land use alternatives that we develop as our next step in the process. Sensitivity to the Tuauta River and surrounding areas. We know there's about 308, at least, I would say, 318 developable acres. We're still looking to refine the location of some of those stream corridors, drainages, accommodating 50,000 square feet of commercial uses within that 10- to 20-year horizon, accommodating about 3,500 dwelling units within those four neighborhoods. Locating higher density residential uses near transit, again, providing a spectrum of housing types, looking at crossing those ravines at perpendicular crossings at the narrowest portion of those ravines, and pedestrian and bike network connectivity. Some of the things we're still determining, what is the exact location and orientation of the town center? Again, with the TSP, where are those key east-west connections? Where will the north-south transit connections take place? What type of crossings will be used at those drainages, bridges, or culverts? Understanding that there's some sensitivity around future development around the Bangston property and the airfield, looking at local street alignments, looking at drainage areas and topography, and then gravity pipelines across drainages and pipe alignments for sewer. All these things need to be determined. So, in terms of our next steps, we are working with Mike and Ronnie and have a postcard that's going to really announce the project to the broader community soon. We kind of did our soft launch in the fall, and now we're getting ready to do our hard launch to the broader community. So a postcard will hit homes in a few weeks. We have, we will have an online open house up and running within the next week or two. We also will be, are working to get that online open host translated into Spanish for the Spanish-speaking residents. We have a virtual public meeting scheduled for March 15th. And again, we hope to have an interpreter available for that meeting should, upon request, if interpretation services in Spanish are requested. And then, as I mentioned, we're just kicking off our stakeholder interviews and focus groups. So, we've been quiet for a little while as we did our existing conditions work and got up to speed, and now we're really ready to launch and engage the broader community in this project. And that is the extent of my presentation, so I'm happy to take questions or hear any comments or ideas you all have, want to share.
Steve? This is John Walter, I have a question for you. On that map that showed kind of the Fisher Road extension, and I noticed that where, I noticed that where all the, where these streets tie in to Beef Bend, there are circles there, is that just, that's not a traffic circle, is it? That's just?
No, no.
You're showing the new road tying into the old road.
Correct, correct. I don't know of any firm decisions on intersection treatments that have been made at this time.
Okay.
Steve, I have a question for you. The communication plan to the broader community, are we just relying on this mailing postcard that's going to be sent out to everyone? Or there's going to be more means of like a broader communication, a more repetitive communication, so people actually get it?
Yeah, I apologize, I should have mentioned that. The postcard, I think, is really important because we don't have the opportunity to do that citywide mailing all that often. There's obviously a cost with that. But along with that, we'll be developing a package of media materials for press releases to newspapers, although that is not as effective as it used to be. Email content so that our stakeholder advisory committee and you all and city council can be emailing that your networks, Facebook, you know, social media content. You'll see this pumped out on social media quite a bit, too. So, we're certainly looking at every means that we can, so if you have any other suggestions, we're happy to take a look at those.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Mike? This is Billy Reynolds. I was wondering and looking at this particular map, where will the roads turn into where we have the proposed shopping center? I just see so much congestion where there's a major traffic light, and I'm wondering if the road to turn into the shopping center will be spaced maybe half a block or so beyond the traffic light.
Yeah, we, I don't think those decisions have been made yet in terms of exactly, I think I mentioned exactly where is the town center? We know it's the general area it's going to be located in, but we don't know if it's going to be oriented more towards Beef Bend Road or Roy Rogers Road or River Terrace Boulevard. So, a lot of those decisions, precise decisions have yet to be made. And I know, and Marcy McInally from Herb's Works is here to talk about House Bill 2001, 2003, but she's also on our team for the master plan. And I know from talking with her that there's also, you know, standards for road spacing from Washington County and potentially ODOT, probably Washington County, that dictate where roads can go as well. So, I think a lot of those decisions have yet to be made.
And related to that is if people, as pedestrians, from the shopping center want to cross over to Beef Bend, because I understand Tigard is considering some developments there, there needs to be a safe pedestrian crossing. And if it's right at the traffic light and cars are making their turns, that's very dangerous and it's a real problem. So, I'd like for thought to be given to pedestrian crossing.
Yes, definitely. And if you've had a chance to look at the 2018 concept plan, the vision there was really for Beef Bend Road to be a bridge between Tigard and this King City expansion area, and not so much of a big divider between the two. And there were a lot of different designs, parkway-like designs that were looked at to try to help that connectivity. In terms of the crossing, I think at least initial thinking on crossings is going to happen through the TSP. And like I said, we're tracking that and we'll integrate the recommendations from the TSP into our doc, into our work. At the same time, we'll be working with Tigard and Washington County to, you know, to looking precisely at those types of issues that you mentioned.
Excellent.
Any other questions that I can answer for you today?
This is Keith, this is just a follow-up comment, and that's, Billy, as far as the planning sequence goes, the TSP is scheduled to be done by the end of June this year, and this plan won't be finished until towards the end of this year. And what we have on the schedule is not to adopt the TSP until this plan is done. So if there is some fine tuning to happen to make sure that everything works well together, we'll be able to do that. This intersection treatment is probably a perfect example of that. We might, we might have an opportunity to have a basic idea where they're going to be, how they're going to operate, but maybe some of the fine tuning would happen later.
Any other questions or comments for today?
You know, just kind of a comment since we're talking about roads, and I put it in the chat. Washington County is having a virtual open house for a complete street redesign update. It's actually, it's pretty informative going in, and they have visions of what different types of streets would look like in the, they, it closes this Friday if anyone's interested in going in and then doing, giving some feedback. It's pretty neat, and I posted in the chat, the website.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for posting that, I hadn't seen that, but that might be relevant to our work, so I think we'll.
Yeah, I think it is, and it's got some really neat street designs with different ways to get, you know, pedestrians and bicycles safely kind of separated from the roads and things like that.
Great. Any thinking they're doing towards that end can only benefit what we're trying to accomplish.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, if there are.
This is Keith again, Steve, on the virtual public meeting on the, on the March 15th, what time of day are we talking about for that? I just want to make sure we all get it on our calendars.
Thank you, I should have put that on the slide. We're, it's planned for 6:00 to 7:30 PM. And what we'll do is, we'll use a Zoom webinar format for that meeting, and we will post the, what we're asking in all of our outreach is for people to go to the website, whether you're wanting to take, visit the online open house or participate in the virtual meeting, all of our outreach is going to ask people to go to that online, to our project website, kingcitymasterplan.com. And on the day of or the day before the meeting, we'll post the actual Zoom link that people can click on, and that's how they'll join the meeting. So please do visit the website, there's a lot of information there, and we're updating it constantly. So, so if you have other questions, I'd encourage you to go there, and you can get a lot of information that way.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Steve, thank you.
Can I just bring up one thing for Steve that I noticed that you mentioned earlier on the commercial area? I think it's always been kind of our hopes that it's more than just commercial, but also like employment land down that way. So if we think about that as we're working through the master plan, just keep in the back of our mind that we want kind of like employment campus slash commercial walkability, work-life balance in that general vicinity.
And we know civic and residential uses will be part of that town center as well, right? Thanks, Mike. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next is the development code update. I presume, is it Keith or Mike is going to chat about that?
Keith, and I thought, Keith, are you there? Yeah.
Yes, I am.
And I think we have Marcy online to talk about it as well.
Perfect.
Right.
Okay, someone start.
Okay. Well, this is Keith, anyway, Marcy has a presentation. So we talked to you folks a little bit about this before, but, and we had the DLCD staff on at our last meeting, I believe, to talk about this project, and now you're going to hear from the consulting team that's actually doing the work. So Marcy has some information for you about what thinking has been taking place on possible code amendments and the extent of those and how we might organize them. So I think I'll just turn it over to Marcy and let her go.
Okay.
Marcy, you should be able to make your presentation shareable.
I'm sorry, are you going to do that for me?
Do you have the presentation in front of you?
I can do it, yeah. I can do it from my computer, if that's what you.
Yeah, it'd be easier.
Okay. But before I, while I do that, just good morning, Chair and Commissioners and Mayor and staff. I'm going to talk about the code amendments. Let me just make sure I've got the right screen here. Can you see this presentation? Let me make a bit bigger. I'll just jump right into the whole presentation. The goals for this project, for this particular project, it's very much tied into all the other projects that we've been talking about, the TSP and the King City Master Plan. But this is specifically to update your community development code and your comprehensive plan so they comply with House Bill 2001, which is the bill out of the legislature last year for middle housing. All cities in Oregon have to, at the end of 2022, the cities are on different timelines from each other based on size, but they need to allow for middle housing in all neighborhoods where single dwellings are currently allowed. And this will set you up well, also going into the future for the way that the Beef Bend South area, master plan area develops. So what I'm hoping is that by the end of my presentation here, you'll understand basically the three different organizations that we have laid out for the community development code structure, that you'll be able to provide any feedback about the draft amendments, and I'll talk very briefly about public involvement. We've met with you once before in January, I think Keith or Mike did that briefing. And we'll be meeting with you another three times through the course of this project. The adoption is targeted for May 2021. This is on a fast timeline because cities are required to comply by that time with the state rule. As part of our outreach strategy, we'll be utilizing the city's website to get information out and generating a mailing to gather public comments and trying to direct people to the public hearings to provide comments. Just a brief definition of what middle housing is. People are very familiar with apartments, which are kind of in the lexicon of architects and developers, they're called stacked flats, they're units that are generally in one building or sometimes in multiple buildings on a site, but they're attached to each other, they're often above each other or side by side or both. That's an apartment, and then everyone is familiar with a detached, single-family house. And the middle housing refers to the range of housing types in between those two types of dwelling units that has been illegal in cities in the United States since really the end of World War II. So, what the House Bill 2001 is doing is allowing these housing types to come back in and be developed. It's not requiring that cities developing, develop them or that developers develop them. It's just going to change the rules so that they become possible. And I anticipate these changes will take place over a very long period of time, and they'll be quite slow and gentle. So it doesn't mean anything is changing overnight. But some of the housing types that are going to be now permitted include duplexes, and we have an illustration here, or a cottage cluster which is small units, about 900 square feet as a footprint, clustered around a shared open space. Row houses, or the state bill calls them townhouses, these are attached each on their own lots. So these are some of the housing types that are going to need to be required, allowed, need to be allowed. So a little bit more background about the House Bill. There are two types of cities that will comply there on different timelines and have slightly different requirements because King City is in the metro area, even though relatively small city, it's subject to the large city rules. And duplexes will be allowed, you will be required to change your zoning codes so that they are allowed on any lot or parcel where a single dwelling is currently permitted. And then, in addition, in some areas based on lot size, triplexes, which is three units, quadplexes, which is four, townhouses, which are two, but which are attached units on their own lots, and cottage clusters, which I just described, those will be permitted in other areas based on lot size. Areas that are of your city which are on slightly different rules are goal-protected lands and master plant communities. And when I look at your code, I'm really impressed at how far ahead of most cities in Oregon you already are. I mean, it's built into the history of King City that because you are a retirement village in the beginning, that is now kind of grown into a more diverse community. You had built your zoning code to accommodate, to encourage small, compact units, and you already permit most of these housing types in your zoning code today. you already permit most of these housing types in your zoning code today. So the amendments are very pinpointed there for you, whereas in some other cities, they're really broad and they will change entire districts. But for you, it's really changing a definition here or there, a dimension here or there. So in the end, you already permit most middle housing types. And one of the reasons that is true is because of this definition on the left here, you have your definition reads like this dwelling multifamily, a structure that contains three or more dwelling units which share common walls, floors or ceilings with one or more than two dwelling units on one lot. It's a little bit of an awkward sentence, but it it basically says that attached units are already defined in your as multifamily housing and that you count anything that's three or more as multifamily. And that's a very friendly to middle housing type of definition. Are there any questions at this point before I move through the rest of the presentation? I don't see anything. Okay, so so I want to underline this one phrase in your definition, however, because you could you I would like to pose a consideration. Your definition currently says that this definition of multifamily or middle housing must share common walls, floors or ceilings with one or more than two dwelling units on one lot. That means they must that a some number of dwellings on that lot must be attached. And I'm for your consideration. We may want to discuss whether you expand that definition to allow detached. So here's some examples. These are kind of crude models, but they give you a sense of from the from the Oregon administrative rules that are part of House Bill two thousand and one and the model code. They show for triplexes, for example, there these are their different configurations that they would allow a city to incorporate, to be attached on a lot that's maybe if this is the street here and and it's kind of like a long lot, they may be attached to each other, but kind of away from perpendicular to the street, or they may be attached to each other and facing the street. Or they may be detached or any combination of the above. Currently, your definition would not allow them to be detached. And similarly with quadplexes, quadplexes could be, you know, here is a configuration where they're both stacked and side by side for units. But they could also be kind of scattered around on a lot and separated, or they could be any combination. And that is a flexibility that the Oregon administrative rules allows you to make, but your current definition doesn't allow. So this slide is about that question and it's really, this is misstated here. I apologize. It's not in order to comply. It's really an option you have to choose that you could allow them to be detached as well as attached. So just a map of your city to show the areas that will be impacted. The areas that are impacted are some of the zones within your existing city. As I mentioned, those are very pinpointed, targeted and limited amendments. But then our project will set up development and middle hat that the development of middle housing in the Beef Bend South area as well. So in your packet, you received our code amendments memo and it's kind of complicated. I just wanted to give you a sample page and walk through it with you just to explain how it can be read. So this is a this is a a sample page fourteen. And some of you may remember that in your previous packet, you received the code audit, which went through each of your zones and identified in green or red that you were ready to go and comply with House Bill two thousand and one. That's green or you had a problem. You're going to have to make an amendment that was red. And it went through each of your zones. I'm sorry, each of your zones here on the left, and then it went through each of the housing types that's required by House Bill and it evaluated. Red, you know, go versus stop. We need an amendment kind of evaluation. What we've done with this recent memo is add this column here. And it goes through the types of amendments specifically that you'll need to make. And there are both minimum compliance requirements and then there are additional optional amendments that you could choose to make in addition. So I'm not going to go through these page by page. That's what the memo is for, but I wanted to summarize the types of amendments. So that you have a picture. So one of those pinpoint amendments is to update the two of your residential zones, that single family and R nine to permit middle housing using your existing multifamily housing designation definition. So we're actually proposing to apply multi to allow multifamily to be a use in those zones, which it's currently not. And to use your current definition for that or your current definition that's amended to allow detached units. So that's what that said is about. We also need to remove site plan review from middle housing types part of the ethic of middle housing or House Bill two thousand and one is that middle housing is not subject to greater discretion or regulation than a single dwelling. And right now, site plan review does not apply to single dwellings, but applies to to types of multifamily and we will need to change that. Then we want to amend the overall structure of your community development code so that it's a little bit easier to understand and use. And similarly, update your comprehensive plan. And what we're proposing to do regarding structure is use more pictures and tables. For example, this is a kind of form-based approach to zoning where all of the development standards are listed. And a table helps you understand by zone or by site type what the lot width or the setbacks are, and you can see them all on one page. And you can see what that dimension is about from a simple plan or section diagram. So this is a section. It's just a building shape. It's not suggesting a particular architectural form. It's just the the building envelope and the plan envelope and where parking is permitted. So this is a a system from another middle housing code that's been adopted and we're proposing to use a similar structure. And then I want to touch on parking for a moment because parking is part of House Bill two thousand and one as well. A lot of cities recall allow middle housing types, but they require them to have more parking than one per dwelling unit. They require often require them to have more parking than a single dwelling house must have. And to comply, cities need to reduce in many cases their parking requirements for for multifamily. So in your case, you need to will need to reduce your parking requirement for triplexes and quadplexes so that it's one space per unit. So I'm going to talk about the overall organization of your code. There's three choices here. This is kind of from the most minimal change to the most bigger structural change. The first one, the most minimal, is just to make middle housing amendments and stick with your existing code structure, which is chapter by chapter by chapter, the zones each each separate in as a separate set of pages. The other is to reorganize the zoning districts for residential into a chapter that uses tables to illustrate multiple zones on a single spread or single page. That would be similar to what I just showed you. And then a third kind of more dramatic change is to actually have a more unified code structure based on what some cities have adopted as a unified code. It's a best practice for code where all of the procedures go into one chapter. All of the other standards having to do with streets or that aren't lot related, but are more public realm related would go into another chapter, but they would all be in the same chapter. That there's an overall structural organization that we could apply while we're we're doing the work here. So we'd like your thoughts on those three choices. And that is my presentation.
What are the, can you hear me? This is Annie.
Yes.
What are the downsides to being more aggressive and and kind of updating our code to its fullest potential?
The downside would be that the staff would need to probably have additional resources to do that in in accompanying our House Bill granted project. I don't know if Keith, you would like to weigh in on that.
Sure. So the community development code we have now is done back in the nineties. And it was a reorganization from what the city had previously, where we had a separate subdivision ordinance and a separate zoning ordinance. We combined the two together. The format was roughly based on what Washington County was using at the time for organization. So it still looks pretty similar that overall, just, you know, big picture, major sections to what Washington County has. What Marcy has own in her, she showed you was a little bit different organization. And in some ways, it could make more sense to do that. The one and Mike could speak to this better than I can, but the one consideration for the city is if you reorganize your entire code, you have to have it recodified and that is not a it's a, you know, can be a relatively expensive exercise. So there's partly a cost consideration to that. I think at least in the conversations that we've had with Mike so far, we're really interested, though, in in reorganizing the zoning district portion of the code to be more like what Marcy is describing, where we try to have used more in the way of tables and summarize things. So it's not as confusing. And then also, we have a lot of our our owning ordinance requirements are in narrative form, including having the numeric standards spelled out in English, which of course is real handy when you're trying to skim the code going on. So we I think we're, I think as far as the staff is concerned right now, we would really like to go with reorganizing at least the zoning districts. And I think the other thing we could do, we could probably even do this in phases. If we decide to reorganize the zoning districts now, that portion of the code and maybe look at possibly a recodification, reorganization later, maybe even after the master plan is done. Maybe we could do it in phases, but we'll we'll have to talk about that some more and and see.
Yeah.
I would like to speak to the as we reconsider about the number of cars, parking spaces and then roads that are large enough so that the fire trucks and the safety vehicles have room to come through. And some of these plans that people have, the vehicles, the large vehicles can't get through because we've tightened the space by putting more houses and then cars park because they there isn't extra parking at the house. So it makes for difficulty. So I think we might anticipate if we have a quadplex that everybody there will probably have two cars. So there must be room for at least eight cars, not on the street, for instance, for that street. And I think we're we kind of overlook that, but it creates a lot of problems.
This is Keith again. You're right. And when House Bill two thousand and one was being created, or at least the implementation part of it was being created, a number of suburban jurisdictions in particular raised this very issue about the parking. And I think it's one part of the legislation that maybe is a little unfortunate and is kind of a one size fits all. It's the same requirement if you're on Southeast Division or someplace in the city with lots of bus service. And it's the same for King City. So we'll have to try and take a look at that. But the thing to keep in mind is the developer, it just is a minimum. It doesn't say that the developer can only provide that. It just says that this is the the minimum you need to provide. We have had a a minimum of just one parking space per unit now for quite some time. What Marcy is saying is that for, I think I've got this right, if you had a fourplex, you could only require now three parking places, not four like we normally would now. So it'd be a slight reduction, but not a not a dramatic departure from what we have been requiring now for probably the last twenty years. But we still need to pay attention to that because at the same time, we're also allowing developments with us smaller streets and minimal on-street parking. So then you really do have the question, well, where are people going to put their cars? They're going to have to go someplace. So I think as we go through with the master plan, I think we'll need to consider that a little bit. And it may be that we try to have some balance where we provide maybe a little bit more on-street parking, or maybe it's even places that are still in the public right of way where it's it's more of a diagonal parking or something different than what you normally see so that you can provide some parking for a neighborhood and still allow for adequate access, particularly emergency access. We've we've talked with 12th Valley Fire and Rescue and they they review all of our subdivision plans and so forth. So it is an issue. And I think we'll be talking about it more, but I think we do have these minimums that we can't go beyond as far as the state is concerned.
Thank you. Hey, Keith and Marcy, this is Joe. And I think in looking at these three possibilities for the reorganization, my suggestion is that we have a good sort of side-by-side comparison in terms of what the risk and impact is and really looking at the total cost of of whatever or whatever the outcome is. We should be able to have a good evaluation of that. And when it comes to parking, I understand, understand the like the requirements. But then but then I think we've also got to be also like realistic in today's world. Most, most families have two cars. So even if you allow one car parking per per dwelling, there needs to be some form of like a community-sized community area that's allocated to to overflow of parking areas. So again, when we look at this, we need to not only look at what the what the requirements are, but also, you know, how how do people, how people are going to live? While you're going to be start for otherwise going to be starting fighting for parking spaces every every single night or someone's parked in your parking space.
Yes.
Yeah, don't mess with my parking space, man. Don't mess with mine.
Exactly.
Yeah. So yeah. We'll definitely have to be taking a look at that because that's probably one of the biggest places, at least in suburban areas where you can have a little bit of a rub. Particularly if you're a half mile, more than a mile from the nearest bus or anything that you could have as an alternative. So we'll, you know, we'll have to see. I think to a certain extent, too, with the parking, the situation is going to be self-selecting. If somebody has a lot of cars and they go looking at a potential townhouse or whatever, and they say, well, where am I going to park my three cars? They may decide to just go someplace else. I mean, it's just sort of like, if you have a really good transit stop with max access and so forth, then you have almost the opposite. The people that don't have cars tend to move there because they're going to use the train and they don't care about the parking. So you know, you'll have a little bit of that, just the market taking care of the people who have a lot of cars won't won't desire to live in a particular place when they can tell right off that the parking opportunities are going to be limited.
Right. Well, I said clearly, the parking is going to be an ongoing conversation, but our, you know, it sounds like our first our first issue right now is just what we're looking at now is is having a real conversation about how we would best want to go with our reorganization. I'm really glad, Keith, that you talked about that number two as a starting point that we could, in fact, phase it in over time, recognizing that the number three option, when you look at her her slides, looks really pretty. looks really pretty clear, concise, you know, something to aspire to, but maybe not the first, you know, first thing out, but number two for sure, I think. And doing it over time should potentially save us some money or be able to spread the cost out a ways to get that code in a better, more presentable manner.
Yeah, I think we definitely could take a phased approach.
And I, I tend to agree with that because that there, as you start with number two, there will be lessons learned from each of those phases. So you know, for each decision you make, you're going to learn some lessons. The next time you can, you can then adjust accordingly and sort of see what the outcome is again.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Oh, by the way, welcome, Joe, to the planning commission. Hadn't, hadn't done a chance to do that yet. So are there more, any more questions for, for Marcy or about this?
Danny, I just want to voice my agreement with both Lori and Joe about taking that measured overtime approach. Marcy, I just had one question about the documents that were included in today's packet. You had mentioned a couple of times that our goal is to include, but then also encourage middle housing in new development. How, how do we actually encourage as a governmental entity, what, what actually happens when developers are building?
This, this would be a question, I think, more about the master plan area. I think, yeah, that, that's kind of an eternal question for planning commissions. Well, okay, so I'll say though, one huge advance you'll have is that these housing types will be allowed where they have really been prohibited before. They've been illegal. And now it will actually be more feasible for someone to do this. Before they would have had to do it as part of a more complicated land division or plan development process, but now it will be allowed kind of just like a single dwelling. Instead of a single dwelling, you'd be able to build a duplex as easily. So that's actually, I think, going to be a huge encouragement. And then there are also things that you can build into your master plan kind of implementation where you perhaps court developers who do this sort of thing. You encourage them to come to your city and use your new easy to use zoning code and your rule, your new rules that allow this housing type. I mean, you kind of, some cities can shop around a little bit. Shop can market their system. So in addition to just like changing the zoning code, there are others more. How would you describe them? They're not regulatory. They're more about providing incentives and creating relationships and conversations. That's not a complete answer, but I hope it helps.
One other, one other big thing on encouraging is the, the development standards that you have. So Marcy had mentioned that currently we have a site, site plan review for three units or more. So then it, it makes it more difficult to do that kind of thing because well, now I've got to go through a process. I have to go to the planning commission. I can't just go to the staff and get a building permit. So it increases the time and expense to do that kind of construction. The other is just our development standards themselves. We have standards that are set up for, I think it'd be fair to say in some zones, maybe more for detached product than a, than an attached product. And so you can have things that are just more difficult or become infeasible because you can't meet the standards. I'll give you a recent example. We, we allow for accessory dwelling units. And when we put the standards in effect at the time, accessory dwelling units was really kind of a new thing and we didn't really know what to expect. And we had a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. But you couldn't put it on a lot if it was smaller than that. Well, of course, in King City, that just about means you can't do it anywhere. So we've gotten rid of that standard now. That was also the urgent in the state, but that would be an example of, of other things that we're going to be looking at in this process to make sure that the standards that you impose on different things are actually reasonable and can, can work. Marcy, could you just touch quickly on next steps and particularly public involvement and kind of words you see as the next, like the next, unless we, what do we have? Three more planning commission meetings?
Right. We, we have talked about how to get a information on the website and generate interest and educate people about what is going on. And I think given the timeline of this project and our adoption horizon, which is very soon, our goal is to generate interest and drive people to the planning commission hearings to comment. So my, my understanding is this public involvement engagement phase is mostly about education. And we may be able to provide something like a visual preference survey that allows people to weigh in on what is most important to regulate. But primarily the goal of the information would be to let people know what is happening and what their opportunities are to come and provide feedback. The amendments are, are the very next, to actually draft the amendments is our very next step. And this project is not on a really long luxurious timeline where we can actually have a virtual open house and then refine the options and then take them back out to the public. It's kind of a fast track if that makes sense.
One thing I'd like to point out, I think we have a little bit more time than Marcy indicated because I think we need to have, my understanding with DLCD is we need to have the project completed by May, June. And the actual adoption by city council can go into the summer, but it's still very short. It's still very short. So we, we may have a, so at the end of May, when I think the project is done for Herb's Works, we may have a hearing with you folks at the end of May to make a recommendation to the city council. We may just have a final hearing to go through what's proposed. And then possibly it would be a planning commission hearing in June, and then we would go to the city council in the summer, July, August for adoption. I think one other thing that's fair to point out is that in the existing portions of the city, since the city is almost fully developed and we're developed actually at relatively high densities, there's not going to be a lot of redevelopment opportunity. And then places like King City Civic Association have CCNRs that would prohibit really changing from single family areas to multifamily anyway. And the city can't do anything about those. So the real change is going to be out in the, how the master plan area develops.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on what Keith and Marcy are really handling with the timeline question coming out of DLCD. We were on a really tight turnaround. So that's why when we look at this and the, in order to comply with House Bill 2001 and 2003, we go through this code amendment, get this on the books, but then we turn around, you know, six, eight months later and adopt the master plan, which redoes it again, you know, so how far do we take it this one, when we know that the master plan, the TSP and everything else is coming online in December, January timeframe. So that's why I think with this one, it made sense to kind of just address the elements that we need to in order to make it functional and comply with House Bill 2001 and 2003. And then use the master plan and the transportation system plan to develop that element of the codes and amend it at that point in time.
I have, I have a question about the, the House Bill 2001. And so what I would say is I would consider that as the minimum level of government jurisdiction and, and requirements. So if King City wanted to make theirs better than that, is that a problem other than developers won't want to work here because we may, we put in more restrictions?
Well, House Bill 2001, in a way, actually eliminates some of the restrictions of standard zoning. A lot of zoning surrounds density and what kind of density you're putting into a square block in a neighborhood. House Bill 2001 kind of strips that out and allows you to essentially add more density than what would have originally been permitted. And then it puts, it puts limitations on the number of parking spots that the city can require. So in a lot of ways, when you have some of these other areas, say, oh, I, I always think Wilsonville and, you know, Hillsborough where they have and even up in Beaverton on the South Hills there, where you have these large houses being developed and they're on single family lots. Well, now someone can basically take that single family dwelling lot and turn it into a quadplex and just provide two parking spots or three parking spots, right? And, and their parking was only there. Now, I think the challenge is your infrastructure, parking, water, sewer, all that is only built to handle a single family. But now you've got four units in that single family. And that was a challenge. It was kind of put through with the concept in mind of areas in Portland where they have these big 1900, 1920s houses that people are trying to divide up into quadplexes and things. They can't do it. So that's kind of the mindset of, that went behind some of the bill's features. And that's what they are pretty much shooting for. But it does have a lot of other alternatives there for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters. The whole idea is to provide something that the market was not providing. So the market is basically providing McMansions on single family lots that are going for six, 700,000. And there was nothing for that population that could afford something between two and 400,000. And so House Bill 2001 essentially pushed that unit or pushed the allowability of that unit on the market.
If I could just answer the question also with the way we structured our document for you, every section where we go through each zone, it includes our options we lay out for you, the minimum compliance things, the things you must do to comply. And then they add some additional, in some cases you have additional choices that you could make. And in the spirit of like going beyond and making your zoning code even more say friendly to middle housing, you could do some of the things that we have listed here. I'll, I'll just run through a couple. Right now, quadplexes here, because this is a 5,000 square foot lot, quadplexes are not required by House Bill 2001 to be allowed in an R, in a 5,000 square foot lot area. But you could go beyond, it would not be out of character with the compact types of dwelling units that you have. You could go beyond House Bill 2001 on this, on this one point and say, no, we're going to also allow quadplexes in our R5 zones. That's an example. We have that determined here. It says, since the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, quadplexes are not required to be permitted, but you could, you could allow them. And same with cottage clusters, you could elect to allow those even in your R5 zone. That would be going above and beyond the House Bill. And that's just an example, but every zone has a sim, well, some zones don't have any options, but most do. If you would just go through the memo, or I'd like, I wonder what you think of that. Is that, does that fit into your category of, of going above and beyond?
Well, I, I don't, Marcy, did you address the question to me or?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I, I, I am not against any of these multi-dwelling units, townhomes, cottage clusters. I'm not against any of that stuff. What I want to, what I really am looking at is quality of life and quality of your living space. And if you have to park three blocks away from your house because you only got one parking spot, that is not quality of life. That doesn't make things easier for you. And we're, we're fixated, not we, the, the state is fixated on the fact or their dream that everybody's going to ride a train to work and everybody's going to ride a bus to work. And you know, that's just not realistic. It's idealistic, but it's not realistic. And as we're going through this thing and we're making these changes, which I, I'm agreeing with all the changes that are proposed here. I think it's really, really good. But that last facet, that last facet about parking is not addressed. And you know, it, it takes just a simple drive around downtown Portland to see lack of parking is making that city less desirable to buy it and live it. But, and you know, it'd be interesting, it would be interesting to take a poll of all the planners in the state and find out how many of those planners take bicycles or walk to work or take the train. My gut level feel is just about every one of them drive to work. And yet we're putting requirements into place that you can only have one car. So, okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go out in the garage, get a piece of duct tape, put it over my mouth. Okay?
I just, I do want to address the parking issue for a moment because I think there, there may be a misperception. The requirement, the House Bill requires cities to require just one per unit. That's a minimum. They can only, a lot of cities right now, they require one unit per single family. And then they kind of punish more compact or multifamily housing or middle housing by saying, well, if you've, if you provide a duplex, you have to provide four parking spaces, you know, you have to provide two per dwelling unit, not just one. And, and this, the House Bill is trying to make it equal. However, it's just a minimum. And a developer, and this is kind of the way a lot of libertarians talk about zoning is, you know, the developers should really be able to decide how much parking to provide because it's them that are taking the risk to provide the dwelling, they should, and to get the financing, and they probably know their market pretty well. And if they need to provide two spaces, they will do that. So it's, they can still, a developer can still provide two spaces, three or four even. I mean, some cities are actually going to put a maximum parking on this. They're going to use this, these code amendments to put a maximum on, but that isn't something we're discussing, but I'm just, why one like to make it clear that they're only required to provide one, but they could provide more. That's a market kind of driven decision that a developer may make. Then the issue I think is more quality of life on another scale where, well, you might lose trees or you might provide more paving, which is going to have stormwater effect. I mean, so these are cascading effects that you could go above and beyond House Bill 2001 and address some of those. Those have to do with quality of life too.
Marcy, wasn't there a stipulation with accessory dwelling units that you weren't allowed to require more parking with an accessory dwelling unit?
Right. You're not allowed to require an additional parking space for an accessory dwelling unit. You're not allowed to require it. So that still means somebody can build an accessory dwelling in it. And if they find they, they want to provide that space and they can do it on the site and in this, it fits the site, they can do it. They can also use an on-street space.
And then metro stipulation is that we can all, we only have, or we can only require one parking spot per unit. Is that right, Keith?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. I was just trying to answer the chat. Uh, so I'll answer it here. So, uh, we currently just have a minimum of one for any type of dwelling unit regardless of size. Uh, and we used to have something for, uh, accessory dwelling units that they didn't have to have a parking space unless there was no on-street parking available along the frontage. And we were, we were, uh, we were told we had to, to get rid of that. But, uh, we have no experience with ADUs yet, so don't really know if that's much of an impact. But we have a minimum of one across the board, uh, for, for units now.
So you guys can kind of see how this plays out. Um, if we have a single family dwelling that has a minimum requirement of one parking spot and then they put an ADU in the back and we can't require another parking spot, that car gets pushed out onto the street or, um, somewhere else. So we do encourage developers to do at least two parking spots. I think we always try to shoot for that. Um, but, uh, I don't think we have the teeth to force them to do that.
Yeah. And the way our standards work too is if, uh, somebody provides a one-car garage with a standard driveway, they would have two spots because the garage would count as one. And then we have a setback requirement of eighteen feet between the garage door and the sidewalk. So you would have space on your driveway for another. So even a one-car garage typically will have, um, two spaces. Provided they don't use their garage as a warehouse. Just to come back to this parking thing, uh, you know, like I said, we've had this one space minimum now for twenty years. And, you know, we've had a few instances where there've been some problems, but you know, for the most part, the world hasn't ended because of this policy. And this really wouldn't be much of a departure. But that's not to say it's, it's something that we still need to take a look at. And in particular, earlier comments about emergency access and so forth. You don't want people starting to just deciding to park in fire lanes and that sort of thing.
I don't, um, think we can let the parking discussion just end without mentioning that it is very expensive to provide parking. And one of the goals of the House Bill is to make housing more, to provide more choices for people in the types of housing that is available and, um, make it eat less expensive. Make more affordable housing. And a parking spot does cost, it adds a lot of cost to every dwelling unit. So there, I'm not minimizing any of the challenges of the parking. Um, but it, it is a, if every city required two spaces per dwelling, housing would be even more expensive than it already is.
Yeah, I think Marcy makes a good point there that, uh, um, what the state's after is trying to get rid of a lot of these things that incrementally add up to more cost for building a house. So it's the parking cost, it's the extra cost if you have a planning commission review and all those hearing stuff as opposed to just being able to go in for building permits. Uh, it's the minimum lot sizes. You need more property to put something on, uh, to even develop something. So it's all those things that keep just helping to drive the cost up. And so we're trying to, so the state's been wanting to look at, well, what are these things that drive the cost up? And what things can we, you know, ratchet down a little bit so that housing at least theoretically won't be as expensive?
Uh, Keith, I think this comes back to the, to my earlier comments I'm, I made about having an understanding of the total cost about these decisions because obviously a developer's interest is to get the maximum revenue per square foot of development. That's what they're looking for. Uh, on the other side, it's a beautiful parkways. Everyone has three parking spaces and a fountain outside, outside my front yard, right? So it's the balancing act about that, but we need to understand what, you know, exactly what those are by having that comparative analysis between the one scenario and the other scenario.
All right. So, um, are we kind of winding down? I know that Mike, Mark has to leave us at, at eleven. Is there any more conversation we have or any more questions anyone has for, for Marcy at this point or for Keith? Okay, so, um, my guess is that there is no, or, or are there more staff reports for, for Mike or for anyone else?
I don't have anything else really to report at this point.
Okay, um, I, I'm not aware, but do any of the, so Mark, Mike doesn't have a city manager's report. Are there any commissioner reports? I don't think so.
I mean, the, the only thing I had was, uh, we did have the, the first SAC meeting, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee meeting. That, that'll be a lively group that's got good, good discussion, um, that happens in that one. And then what I put in the chat was just the, um, the Washington County Open House, um, the, uh, street design update. It's pretty interesting and that does close this Friday. So if anyone wants to check that out and do the, the little survey that they have, it's, I think that we can hopefully maybe incorporate some of the design concepts that they put on there.
Well, that's great information. Thank you for sharing that with us. Um, Annie?
I just wanted to say, um, as reading through the packet, um, for today's meeting, there is the three comparative experiences with building the Ville de Bois and Bethany and Northwest Crossing. And I just wanted to, um, kind of make sure everyone's read that. The Northwest Crossing process of development was fascinating. And I hope something that, you know, they have a, you know, ultimate different product at the end of the day. But, but something that I hope we can replicate here in King City in terms of, um, you know, educating the populace about smart development and then, you know, rolling out their development overall in a kind of coherent manner that made sense in the end. And so I'm hoping that, that everyone kind of takes a look at that and, and sees the vision that we could have if we look towards the other, um, recent developments that are comparable to King City, um, so that we can, you know, attempt to mirror that.
I know. That's great information. Those are really, really good studies and well worth everyone's time in, in going through those. Any other comments from any of the commissioners? Okay, so at this point, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
Okay, John moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Okay, so at this point, um, everyone raise their hand if they're ready to adjourn. It looks pretty unanimous to me. So at, uh, ten forty-eight, this planning commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you.